Okay. We're ready to get underway. So we have every member of the planning board is here, so all seven of us are here. Well, that's good. So we definitely have a quorum. Uh, welcome, everybody. Uh, public comment. Uh, public comment time for items not on the agenda. Anybody have any comments? For things which are not on the agenda. I'm assuming everybody here is on the agenda. Okay, hearing none, we will move on eighty-two Brooklyn Road.
Yes, this is a very interesting request that's going to the ZBAA since it involves uh. Uh, real frontage and subdivision, it's coming to the planning board for a recommendation. This is right on the, right on the corner of Brooklyn and thirty-eight or thirty-eight just north of the village of Freeville. It's that corner lot. It's about a seven acre lot that's uh now. Making a five lot to provide another house on the lot for family member. Uh, they have a short five feet of frontage and like two hundred and seventy. They need two seventy-five to accomplish this. And per New York State law there, uh, the ZBAA has to get a recommendation from the planning board for anything involving subdivision.
This free zone. Um, that's what Brooklyn Road is. You know, it's over there so far. Okay. Uh, do you want me to pull it up? Yeah.
Uh, for eighty-two Brooklyn, I don't believe so.
Apple can tell me she not being late tonight.
Yeah, I'll try to bring it up there, but yeah, go ahead.
The Brooklyn Road in Freeville.
It is. It's not in the village of Freeville. It's not in the village of Freeville. It's a Freeville address, but it's not in the village of Freeville. Correct. It is in the town of Dryden with a Freeville address.
Yeah, so Tony, I do have a couple of questions, or maybe Ray, you can help me with it. So that corner, it's twenty-five feet wide, the right away through there. But the right hand though, where it takes a left. That's pretty, that would be, that's the driveway, right?
Well, no, it's just the providing the legal frontage, there was the same driveway that goes to eighty-two Brooklyn.
There goes the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll just keep on going a little bit further to the east there and then.
And there, so they have a common driveway.
Yep.
Okay, alright, so they're not using, I didn't know, I got, I thought they were using it for access, something like.
No, it's just simply to provide the legal frontage.
Okay.
Good one. What? Anybody?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about five feet, right?
Five feet, yeah.
Uh, what's the status of the? Yeah, very.
The status of the variance.
They've applied for one, they're waiting for recommendation from us.
We'll give this during their application.
Right, correct. Any other questions or concerns on this?
Or any motion from us?
Yeah. Motion to recommend to the. Sony Board. Of appeals that. This. Variance would not. Does not impact the character of the neighborhood. Seems to be okay.
Given that that um. Narrow twenty-five foot wide piece is not required to access the lot.
Right.
Do we really say anything? Using the twenty-five foot?
Well, I think we just did.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we were talking about in the ZBAA.
Yeah, it's in the ZBAA that, that, that the recommendation is that it be approved with, you know, with the condition that. With the understanding that that twenty-five foot is not going to be used for. Uh.
For access.
For access. Alright.
Yep.
That's the motion.
Alright, I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Uh, unanimous. Okay, that one was easy. Fifteen Cobb Street.
Okay, this is a, a lot that uh, they're applying under the section two seventy dash six point seven to. Get it conceptually approved, it is subdivisible, but not going through subdivision in order to put a second dwelling on the lot. Um, so this is a sketch review before the planning board, if you agree to the. Sketch, then I can make that determination, they file it in the title record and they can get a second dwelling put on the lot.
Put on the lot, okay. Yeah, I didn't see a problem with that either, so we've done that before.
Yep. Yeah, it's got, it's got over five hundred feet of frontage.
So this is just straight subdivision.
Yeah, if you have it then.
Uh, and as, as for seeker. We believe this is a type-two action. Um. So seeker, a full seeker will not be needed, right? And it's under, what was that article, eleven?
I believe that's eleven. Yep, six seventeen point five. C eleven.
C eleven, right. Okay.
The property owner is here, we're hoping the mother-in-law's favor, she's close, not too close.
Uh, okay, so any questions?
I just had a comment, I used to work at standing, so if you guys want to read the moment of the comments.
Read the moment of the vote, I will.
Well, guess we'll, we'll.
But we are just hoping to put a second, it's actually a small, double wide.
Sorry, can you come up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just that way, because there's people on Zoom, everybody can hear.
Yeah, so I hope you can see it off to the right there, we're just hoping to put a small, it's a forty-four by twenty-seven double wide that she'll live in there. She's got a separate driveway, it's already established there, so.
Go ahead.
Septic, that all, it's like a separate system from the.
It will be, and we have a permit we just got from Tompkins County to come out, dug a hole. So it'd be a separate septic and well, and then nice that will run in from the lines in the back. So it'll be all separate, but I don't really want to subdivide the lot, because we don't really have an intention of selling it or something.
But we don't need to see that.
What? No, no. Now, that's really up to the health department to say whether or not they can put it in. Right?
Yeah, they did approve a permit for us.
I mean, where, the, the drawing doesn't really show where the septic is. Is it, it's on well and, well on septic?
Yeah, the house will be here.
Yeah.
The septic is going well, probably two lateral six and both lines here. Um, they might have to be lit probably depending on the elevation there, and we're going to put the walls, got to be a certain distance away that'll be up here.
Right.
For this.
Yeah. The health department has to approve all that. Alright. Any other questions? Uh, so this one does. Oh, this is a type-two, this is the type-two, I don't need to see current list. Alright. Move to wave, uh. This is the sketch plan, so move to wave for site plan review and approve. The sketch plan. Standard conditions apply. Um. And um.
You're moving that?
I am moving that.
One second.
Just, John seconds, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, it wasn't more exciting.
Yeah, yeah. It's great.
Uh, nineteen sixty-eight Dryden Road.
Okay, this is the end.
Here, and Don is starting, is uh. Actually home.
Can you come up here to this table? By that way, the Zoom picks you up. For people.
That Don, I think is, is on as well, Don is our, Don over at company.
Don Strick, okay.
Yes.
I'm, I'm present, yes.
Alright.
Got it.
So this is American Homes out on Route thirteen, it's uh, come to us for site plan review, they, they've been operating under special use permit and site plan review dating back to the nineties. Uh, so now they're gonna move to the office and uh. You know, just update their site plan. So that's what they've done with an application.
Our, our current office is twenty-eight years old and it's an old house, and we just want to. Put something new in. You know, and we'll have handicap ramps and everything that's needed and stuff like that as well.
Somebody had to bring that up.
Do you just kind of pull that up, sketch up?
What's that?
Sorry, I didn't have it preloaded.
Yeah.
Treatment.
So is this just gonna be one of those?
I'm sorry.
This is gonna be one of your manufactured homes that you're gonna use.
It's gonna be, um, it's built to New York State specification, it's a modular.
Four five, uh, chief eighteen one oh one is new office.
Correct, yeah. It'll be, it's a twenty. See, uh. Thirty by. Fifty is gonna be the size of it. Um, all the other ones are displays that are, that are on, on site, stuff like that now, yes.
I saw you added the driveway from the earlier.
It, it used to be the, the drive-in movie theater, so it's still kind of the same driveway that was there. Uh, the screen's still halfway up anyways, but um. You, we're gonna pave like the driveway in the front, stuff like that after the office is in and stuff, but we're gonna just pave the existing, what's there now.
Do you have trucks come in, you people like move houses out?
Yeah, we, our, our displays we keep on, you know, for a few years till. You know, till, uh, you know, colors, you know, expire, things like that, and then we bring a new display in, but um, that's, right now, that's the. The total number of homes that will always. Display and stuff like that.
And, and. And homes don't go out of this, right? They come from elsewhere, like the ones you sell.
I'm sorry.
The, 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 the homes you sell don't come out of this. Property, right? This is, this is just display.
Our manufacturers, we have one in New York State, uh, and the rest of them are out of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, and so, so the traffic that this generates is, is just traffic coming to view the houses. And occasionally. Trucks to set up one of the, one of the.
Co- correct, yes. Like if we, if we have, we have one two-story on display, we bring a crane in, um, and we'll keep our two-story up for. Five or six years, then we'll bring a crane back in and ta- and take it back down.
Yeah, I saw them doing one of those once when I was driving by. A uh. Yeah, so not a lot of traffic.
No.
Yep. So yeah, I didn't see this parking before, is that all parking up front now?
The, the shaded part, we had the Reagans do the, the survey for us and, and the shaded part is where we're gonna have. The pavement done. It actually has, still has the old. Road that goes all the way around and stuff like that, but it's just a dirt, you know, it's a dirt road and stuff like that.
So how wide is that access point then?
It's, it's quite wide, it's um, it's actually got the, the sign in the center.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Do you need that to access the homes that are in there?
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if they, if they bring one in or something like that, yeah, or bring one out, it's, it's, it's. You know, they can go in either direction.
So when you paved it, are you designating like specific parking spaces in there?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna line, put lines on it, stuff like that as well, yes.
How many spaces?
I, I don't, I, I think once, well, no, once we see it, you know, and stuff like that, but. I mean, I don't. Anticipate, you know, maybe ten, you know, fourteen.
I mean. Customers are the time you have.
I'm sorry.
I mean, customers are the time you have.
Cut that. Weekends are better than, than weekdays, but um, I think last week we had thirty customers for the week.
For the week, right? Not all at once.
Not all at once, no, spread out over the seven days.
They don't come for the big sale.
Like Saturdays are usually our busiest day, we, we have ten to. You know. Ten to, ten to twelve customers for the whole day.
You have ten stalls.
I'm sorry.
You have ten parking stalls, that should.
Well, it, I mean, there's. More like, I mean, the, you know, the road goes all the way, like, we can park down, you know, past it, we'll leave the spots for customers and stuff, so.
Um, one thing that I troubles me is having that big of an entrance and exit.
Uh, it's been, it's been.
But now you're changing it, so I don't know why.
Well, we, well, we're bringing out, like, for instance, if it's a, if it's a sixty-foot long home. Um, you know, it'll have a, you know, a twenty-five foot truck in front of it, it, we kind of need the turning radius, you know, for, for to pull out.
I get that, I'm, I'm just pointing out that it's hard for. When you have two exits that are big, you get vehicles leaving at the same time, each entrance, you know, you get, it gets confusing for traffic flow.
We, I mean, I guess we sell them, like, if the, if the trucks are leaving or whatever, they actually stop traffic, so. They have escort vehicles and they, they stop both ways and stuff like that.
I mean, additional lighting or?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are you adding any lighting or just?
Light, lighting?
Yeah.
Um, no, I mean, we're, no, no.
Well, just.
All the houses have, all the houses have electric to them, and so we'll have like, you know, the exterior light on the house, but, you know, we're not putting in any, any different lighting or anything like that.
Is the sign lit?
No, it's not. Do you remember, it used to be lit?
It's not lit now. It used to be, yeah, it isn't anymore, it's fine.
The old, it makes work. The office, don't make the, the permanent structure with concrete block.
We're, we're gonna. Modulars have to go on at least a, a, like a, we're gonna do a, like a, a superior wall foundation. But it's not a basement, it's gonna be a crawl space.
But you go down the cross.
Yeah, they'll go below the cross line, yeah.
Is that just for the office or is that?
That's just the office, yeah, the, the, the models are only on like concrete slabs or like the back row is just. Yes, they all of them can be moved, yes.
Yeah, the, the models are obviously temporary, the office will be a permanent structure.
Any other questions?
Yes. Any, I'm sorry, any?
Any pole?
There, there's, we're gonna, when we redo, if, if we get to redo the office, we're gonna bury electric, you know, we're gonna do, we're gonna bring the water. Uh, you know, the water was from when it was. Uh, drive-in movie theater, then, and we're gonna, you know, bring it into the, into the crawl space foundation and help things up that way. I mean, the office will have exterior lighting. You know, but, you know, uh, you know, outside, we don't really have. Uh, you know, like, like I said, our models have power to them, so we'll have outside lights on the, on the models, but we don't really have. Uh, you know. There's no, there, there's, there's, there's light poles that have not worked since, since the, probably the eighties.
And there's no plan to make them work?
I'm sorry.
There's no plan to make them work?
No, we're not, you know, the, the only power we need to, to the, you know, like, the lights for the houses and the, and the office.
We're just concerned about light pollution, right? So if, so all we're talking about is just exterior lighting that you would have on a house.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, by, by the exterior doors.
Granted, there's a bunch of houses there, but it's exterior lighting like you would have on a house. Not poles or uh. Streetlights or anything along those lines.
Your customers coming in by appointment or is it?
Sometimes both, I mean, those, we'll, we'll get a lot of like drive-in, um, you know, just um. You know. You know, stopping, they, they went by and they saw him and stuff like that, but we, we do make, have appointments and stuff as well, so. Oh yeah, we're, um, we're, we close at six.
Okay. So we move to approve this, yeah, I think we should. Yeah. Do you want to stay, you want to move?
Yeah, I know, move, move this, that sketch plan was drawn. Wait, well.
Why are you having to go through your seeker first?
You want to do seeker, okay, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's, we, I thought, don't we approve that first and then your seeker?
No.
Never mind, okay. Fine. Uh, seeker, okay, so it's a short form. Uh, seeker is what's required on us, uh, which are eleven items. A world proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations, no. World proposed action result in a change of use or intensity of use of land. No.
So, we have the, just scrolling the, held on up on the screen, you have any questions relative to that?
Oh. The part one is up.
Yep.
And people, we received that, right?
Yep, that's part of the packet.
No questions.
I wanted to get it on those, those folks.
Okay. So there's no questions on part one. Everything looks good there. Uh. Impair the quality of. The character or quality of the existing community. No, been there for years, you know. Uh. Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a. Critical environmental area, no.
No.
A proposed action result in adverse change of existing levels of traffic affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkways? Nope.
No.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in use of energy? And it fails to incorporate. Readily available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No.
No.
Will proposed action. Impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private. Waste water treatment facilities, that's a private water system.
We have a well.
It's well in the septic, right? But they're all existing and it's not gonna impact that, you're just.
Yeah.
We just had a new pump put in.
Right. Uh, will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? I don't know, I think that screen is. Historical, no.
Well, it's definitely historical.
Yeah.
The street is on casings anyways.
Uh, but now it's mostly pine trees, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Nope. Will proposed action result in increased potential for erosion, flooding or drainage? We are paving that. Piece, but it's already growl.
It, it was paved at one time.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
It's, it's actually, it's actually crumbled paving, yeah.
Yes, that's not really gonna change anything. Well, proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Very. Uh, so. I believe that means we find a negative declaration and move that we find a negative declaration seeker. Second, all in favor?
Alright, alright, okay.
Okay, so that part's done.
Okay, now move the other. Move the. Move the sketch plan. As permit as a final, final flat for the site plan. And with conditions, we didn't have any other conditions.
I'll, I'll second. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Alright, okay, it's unanimous. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh. Nine thirty-three Dryden Road.
Okay. This is Burn Auto, and we have the owners, Angie and William Chen here with the architect, John Snyder. So this is a. A multi-board decision here, so it's coached with the planning board for site plan review. And then there's gonna be further actions because there are two area variances uh, in five four. And also a special use permit, you know, five four, because the invana and building beyond larger than five thousand square feet requires special use permit. And this addition of two thousand square foot puts them. A few hundred feet beyond that limit.
So, hey, we talked about this at my, last time, is there something different this time?
Um. Just that uh. They have recommendations. They, they were coming back with a lot more detail in the, in response to the comments from last time.
Just more details.
So the site, site plan has more details in it. So tonight's intended action would be to declare ourselves new for seeker, since there are other two bodies involved. Um, I would assume they would concur, we have to go through that process. And then um, making recommendations to those two bodies. If you wish them to proceed with their. Uh, respective actions.
Do we usually do the seeker for? SUPs?
Well, this one, I'd say the bigger part of the review is with this body, so you can always, you know, we're gonna ask him to negotiate and wrangle.
I don't think town board will care.
Yeah.
No.
I would expect ZBAA and Town Board to concur with your. Bigging lead agency. And I think.
We might probably do that first, right? Declare, declare that we are the lead agency. The agency, is that the word I want for?
Yep.
Yeah.
For secret purposes of a coordinated uh. Review of an unlisted action.
Right. Did we, did we need to vote on that?
Um. Yeah.
So I move that we declare ourselves the. The, the planning board as the lead agency for the purposes of a coordinated. Uh, review uh, and for seeker. I'll second. Okay, any other discussion? No, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay.
Okay, yep. So now it's on to the revised sketch to. See what the responses have been.
Yep.
Uh, see if there's anything further and then forwarding on recommendations for the other two bodies.
Right.
So that they can act within their next meeting cycle, so I would expect the. Would be like may first for the uh. ZBAA. And April meeting for the Town Board.
Alright. Okay, but.
Um, thanks, yeah, so uh, before you is a revised site plan based on comments from the prior meeting that we had. Um, I know there was comments about trying to maintain a single point of access to the site across, or what we're calling Lot B across the. Um, Dryden Road. Um, it's a little, there's a lot of. Drop-off that happens in that lot. Uh. Uh, with wreckers and tow trucks coming in, that's really their primary drop-off. And it is a tight lot, once that gets uh. Filled up with, with vehicles. So what we're proposing is to kind of crunch down those entrances to that site. Uh, and create some green space, we are suggesting moving the um. Bus shelter slightly, so that we can get a. Hopefully a crosswalk. That would lead to a more logical place than. You know, just kind of. Discharging right there, so um. That's, that's really the extent of the changes there, the plan for the lot is really just to kind of, you know, line it out better and then regrade it with gravel and, you know, um. Do some minor work there, we don't have any lighting planned for that lot, there is two lights that are. On street utility poles that light that lot. Um, and then any lighting that we have on our building, as we discussed prior, would be just really wall packs and. Um, you know, uh, and we would work. um you know, uh and we would work to make sure those were dark sky compliant fixtures. Um that's really the extent of the changes from the prior meeting.
Is is the is the plan to have the parking lot sign to be one way, like like have an entrance and an exit, or is it two entrances?
It's, well, it's two-way coming in, but the lot is so tight that it's really one-way kinda looping around. That's how how that works, um we also have an occasional school bus that does use that that lot. Think in the mornings to to turn around. Um. So that's that's what you have before you, I I think the rest of the design is unchanged. I did get some comments today from Dave Sprout on stormwater. And I owe the board a a detailed stormwater drawing. Um. How to get with Dave on on the Lot B, I think he might have missed looking at that, I don't think there's really anything significant there from a stormwater standpoint, um since we're just kinda cutting back some of the gravel lines and we re um reorganizing it slightly. Um. Yeah, and that's, and Dave gave me comments on the Lot A. Yeah, I guess um. That's, yeah, I'd have to take a look at the dimensions there again a little bit better, um. That's, we're currently not angling the parking in in the lot, we're going straight in, um. Yep. Yeah, they sh- they. Yep, yep, yeah, that's why we're suggesting it be one way. There is, there is a little bit of overhanging, as you can see with the truck parking or the trucks that I have illustrated there that would kinda overhang that bank that goes up there uh a little bit. Um so I think there's some space there. Oh, it's, oh, yeah, it's not. Yeah, I can, I can add some dimensions to that, it would be.
Would the um
With TCAT, yeah, and DOT and, yeah. We haven't started that yet, um but we're proposing it and, yeah, we we like to see that crosswalk, so yeah, that's gonna take some coordination with DOT and.
So how how far is it actually moving?
Uh about eight feet.
Eight feet, okay.
Yep. Yep, and that's a TCAT bus that's shown there in inside. In scale.
Right. So about the about the length of the bus stop, right, isn't the bus stop about eight feet?
Yep.
Yeah. Yes, it's bubble, it's just moving at the.
Moving the concrete pad.
Yeah.
Just refastening it or if they have a new one. We're willing to work with them on it, of course, working with DOT on the crosswalk too.
On the part where the building goes into the hillside there, I I think there was some discussion at the last meeting about either some kind of barrier there. Or was that just like trees or I can't remember what that?
Yeah, it's kinda, it's a little bit overgrown right now, and I I think we'd probably end up having to clean that out. I don't have a land or a planting plan that we have formally submitted, and I know that's one of the requirements that we have to submit. Um but I think we would probably look to kinda clean that up from a green standpoint, plant some trees and some screening.
And the parking up next to the building is handicap parking, that was there.
Uh there is, oh, we've got some lines that overlap there, but yeah, there is a plan for some handicap parking or handicap parking spot up close to the building. That's what those lines are there.
So I think we asked this last time, but remind me, what 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 do you expect the impact of traffic to be?
Uh I think fairly minimal change, I mean, I don't I I think this is really more of a kind of an operational uh change, I mean, certainly would probably increase business. But.
Now, the night.
Right.
I hope so, the night, but I mean, with small flow and our shop, you know, the arrangement, it's easy for the guys to work with. So it's so cramped and.
Yeah, the shop is so cramped, so that's that's the reason for the expansions to, you know, give the technicians more space to work. And make it a safer, safer environment.
Alright.
You see, the parking on Lot B currently utilized by anyone or new customers.
That's been a south parking lot since day one when we were operating business. Just because there's only issue within they didn't um express that or show them the lots change on the zoning, so right now we just want to just make it official, we've been using this as all parking lot, designated as all parking lot. I think there was a confusion last time talking about it's a parking right for the TCAT, which is not a true statement, is also a private parking. And you do have a science as for our own customer only. That's what a crosswalk is very critical to us, if our customer go across the road and our technician had to, you know, for customer every day, and there's multiple. Um so it's safe, the safety for our employee and our customer is critical to have the privacy.
It's brutal in a way, if you're people coming up in the trailer park there and crossing the bus car.
Yep.
That's we never understand why the DOT didn't give us that one last time.
Yep.
Might be what we walk this angle into, but in seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
You can take that out of that center spread.
Yep.
You have that.
Yeah, I'll I'll rerun those numbers.
Yep.
Yep, no, you're right.
Other concerns? I mean, I think this is, even though it's expanding the building, it is, it's improving. It's improving the flow, it's improving the green space, right, lower ones consistent. I just, I'm just not sure, but we're alright using across the street as part of the green space.
Well, I think that's the rationale of the mitigation for doing such a large variance, uh so that's definitely gotta be tied. And so I would think one of the eventual conditions of approval would be that the ownership remains uh the same on both of these lots.
On both lots, right, right. Right, cuz if they were to sell just the one side, that would be bad, yeah.
Yep.
Because then they'd be way in violation of the green space. And that lot would have to remain the same, the parking area.
Yeah.
So if you sell it, you gotta sell it together.
We have to.
Oh.
Although there really isn't enough parking there for some of the parked cars anyway, so yeah, they kind of need that lot across the year. Um, okay. Um, so we should.
Speaker. Um, no, you actually, you did the seeker declaration, so once you have concurrence from the other boards, then.
We don't have a secret.
So recommendation to ZBA.
Well, yeah, so theoretically they should have concurred before you do seeker, but then they can't take their actions without you doing seeker. Um. So procedurally, I'm not sure what, if you were to do seeker tonight.
Why don't we let them do seeker, let them be lead agents. It's getting at last.
Well, the ZBA would be getting at last. So there are three bodies involved.
Right.
Uh I fully expect them to concur with you doing seeker, but I guess in a normal march out, we would have that official concurrence before you do seeker.
Right.
So I'm not sure if we can jump to doing seeker. Any other thoughts on?
I used to be on the planning board in Cityville, so I I know the thankless job you all do.
Uh well, should we not declare ourselves as lead?
Yeah, but you have the most, you have so much more knowledge of this than the other boards do, it seems so perfect for this body to do that. Um. I don't know if it's if it's okay procedurally to do a presumptive seeker process and presuming that they're gonna be concurring. If we don't concur, then it's like a redo.
We could make that a condition, right? Or or alright, we could do the seeker, assuming assuming that that the Right, with the with the resolution for the secret.
I think that the the first body that reviews the project is supposed to do secret.
Yeah, but then you you do, procedurally, you declare the agency, get the concurrence of the other bodies before actually proceeding.
Yeah, that that doing it that way means that you they gotta go through these other two meetings and then come back here for seeker.
Yeah.
That seems kind of.
But we don't have it.
Oh, there wasn't this, that's the.
Oh, we don't have a form?
I sent it along.
Did, okay, sorry.
Do we have part?
On the application, yes, so let's pull it up.
I thought I thought we did, I thought it was in the last.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
We should have part one. Yeah, there it is.
Okay.
So part one.
Are you gonna share that, John?
So I think we should do. Do we agree that we can do seeker and say that it's contingent on concurrence from the other boards? So part one, um she. Well, I can put it up here, hold on.
Are you are you co-host?
Yeah.
You're building a share? You make them co-host?
Yeah, I'm I'm a co-host.
For Johnny, so you can share.
Who's putting it up?
I'm looking for it.
Oh, I have, I have it right here, I can put it. Which screen do I wanna share? This one.
And also I just wanna raise a couple of landscaping, since we're gonna get a landscaping plan and to to uh mark this out a little better, the bushes right along the street front, um depending on what you pick there, we want them to be fairly short, so that they're not struggling with sightlines, okay? And then, and I remember in discussion from last month about putting any landscaping on the other side on that uh north lot. Uh was there any? On that B. Was there any discussion from the board last month about any landscaping on that B?
Well, he's got it on this drawing.
I'm I'm not seeing any.
No, I don't have any landscaping.
Well, well, it's not, I mean, it's it's green space. Uh uh it looks like you're putting in some kind of berms or something, right? What, I mean, what's going in the middle to keep the cars from parking in the middle?
Oh, that would be a dedicated green space.
Great, yes.
Yes.
Have green spaces, so they're not real.
I think it's lawn at this point, I don't know, I thought I remembered some discussion of having.
Yeah, it's kind of a blank canvas right now.
Yeah.
Whatever we need to do, we can fly, we're willing to do.
I don't know if you wanna get something on the record about what you're kinda leaning towards, do they have something to respond to?
Fair permit for approval, yes. Total acreage, one point two one. Physically disturbed, point six five. Probably fit one point two one. It's currently zone commercial and residential?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's a residential use on Lot A.
Uh is a proposed action permitted under the zoning regulations? It's not a permitted use?
No, they are.
What?
Those are residential as a permitted use.
But the proposed action, which is the what they're doing.
Part of.
Part one, it says a permitted use under zoning regulations, they said enough.
Because it needs an area.
Oh, it needs a variance.
Yeah.
Yep, and 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 SUP, right, both.
Yeah, yeah, that was permitted, but the variance makes it not compliant with zoning regs.
Consistent with adopted comprehensive plan, yes. Character resisting builder natural landscape, yes, it's been there for years and years. And there, that building's been there as long as I can remember. Uh substantial increase in trap, this is the ghost of the question I was asking earlier, right, it's it's we don't anticipate it being a significant increase in traffic.
No.
Either exceed state energy code requirements. You're on municipal water there, right?
Yes.
Uh it's gonna connect to existing supply. Wastewater. No archaeological site there that we know of.
There is one nearby with nine forty four driving.
There is one at nine forty four.
I I don't think it's listed, but it's eligible to the most.
But this isn't gonna impact. You're high enough, you're not in the hundred-year float plane. Any questions on part one? No. Good. And we can do it short, right?
Yep.
Okay. Is this in, will this create a material conflict with adopted land use or zoning regulations? Is it a conflict?
No, I'd say it's mitigatable, so.
Mitigatable, it's small, right, so, yeah, okay. Alright. Uh intensity, change in use or intensity of land, no. Impair the character or quality of the existing community. Oh, that was one thing, you you you're not changing hours of operation, this operates during the day. You're not gonna be increasing the amount of like impact wrenches going all the time and bothering neighbors with lots of noise and all that stuff, right? Uh no. Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics caused establishment of a critical environmental area, no. Will proposed action result in adverse change existing level of traffic? Or effective visiting, well, small, yep. Will proposed action increase the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate well, energy competition, small. Uh impacts existing water supplies or wastewater treatment, no. Impair the character or quality of important historical archaeological or aesthetic resources, no. Though an adverse change to natural resources, E.G. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater for. Result increase potential for erosion. Flooding or drainage problem, no.
Small.
Will the pros that can create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Okay. I move that we have a negative declaration of seeker, assuming incurrence. Of the other boards. Other two more. Second. John seconds, any other discussion? All in favor? Alright, okay, that's unanimous. We have a seeker out of the way contingent. On the currents for the other boards. Um. Recommendation to zoning board. Is there, that's where they're going next, right, zone?
Uh, town board first.
Town board first. Well, we'll design first. Uh, any recommendations to zoning? Other than we think this is okay, based on the sketch or based on the site plan. Site plan using the open space. Or the site plan using the open space requirements across the screen, pretty across the screen, yeah.
Tony?
Yep. Yep.
Dave gave, uh, as John said, Dave gave some stormwater suggestions, so maybe you wanna put that in there.
Oh, well, well, there's another thing we were waiting on too, what did you say, or first thing you said, you owed us.
Oh, you, uh.
Landscaping.
Yeah, when you say it finally.
And so there there's two two contingencies, right, we have to approve, one is that you submit. A landscape, a full landscape plan. And then the other is that you we do whatever suggested or while in the stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In the stormwater review, and those things can go, like, it can be up to the town board or whoever. Make sure they have the.
Cause we will be the last body, so if there's.
You don't necessarily need to see this landscape plan, they just need to have it when they belong to it.
Okay, if you wanna defer to them to decide the final landscaping feature, we wanna defer to them.
Or make them come back here.
Some good.
I think it's fine, yeah, okay. So just ma- make sure as this moves forward that we have those two pieces incorporated into it, okay?
Okay, oh.
Uh, other.
Would you wanna take this?
Other, um, well, that, uh, there's some other things in the memo that, uh. Talked about some of those requirements of site plan that we're still.
From a lawyer? What was that from?
Well, mine was from Gina.
Yeah, uh, yeah, no, Gina sent me an email too, yeah, I gotta go through.
That's what I was thinking, there might be one time to come back here next month.
Okay, let's do it, okay, do that, sorry. So yeah, the I I think I think we're ready, it's just, yeah, let's just, um. Cause they're they're not gonna be done with the other two before then anyway, right?
Right, so then we come back here next month for the final site plan at this body, but you still wanna make your recommendation so that the town board and the. The town board will have acted before they come back here.
Okay.
Uh, and then the ZBA will act afterwards, but they wanna have a locked in site plan.
So our recommendation to ZBA is they allow the variance. Based on.
And I would give some good rationale, cause they're they're gonna. Take your recommendation, this is a rather large, you know, dimension, it's a rather large variance.
Right.
I think they're gonna also see some. Some, uh, some of your thought process for why you feel it fits.
Well, using the law across the street, we're actually increasing green space, even though the building is getting. Um, it's better flow, it's safer for. Pedestrians. Traffic flow, safer for employees with the expansion, right, that's one of the reasons for the expansion. Um. Others. Well, lobby is. Lobby is. More landscape stuff, yeah, gravel, yeah, yeah. More landscape, set a great lot, right?
It fall over the box.
Yeah. Bus stop.
Well, strong, or or it's also. One way for.
Yeah, they're also putting in, uh, some better handling of like the garbage dumpsters and stuff, right, those are in a better place, I think.
And and just to understand that they are gonna do everything in their power to make that crosswalk happen, but it's ultimately. Moving the D O T to do it.
D S C, no, I I get. But they've created a passageway to go.
Yeah.
Eventually, whether the crosswalk, when the crosswalk gets put in or not, yeah, that's 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 where people are gonna cross, right, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's really not safe because they feel coming down.
Yes. Um. But it right, well, that'll be good. Well, I can get them from the reporting. Uh, or the transcript. Um. So I move that those are our recommendations, that that the ZBA approved, given the recommendations we just talked about, which we will. Pull from the transcript and put into a actual written thing, okay, uh. Second. John, okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Alright, and now for the town board, same thing with town board SUP, right, is that our recommendation is they grant this, the modification to. The special use permit. Based on essentially the same things that we just talked about.
Hmm.
With same, same rationale. Landscape plan. Uh, and they and they must have a full landscape plan and the and they address the stormwater and the other things. Which are in the memo, but we can, we can, we'll we'll do a final site plan or the last part of that, which will cover all that stuff, right?
Okay.
So as far as recommenda- recommendation to the town board, I think we just, we're just moving with the. Agree with with those. But I think it would be good before, if it goes to the town board with this, with the landscape. Plan and all that. With them. Okay. That's my motion. I'll second it. Okay, very second, so. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Alright, okay. So the next steps, you go there, town board, uh, then zoning, and then come back here for the.
Uh, we're going to provide.
But you'll come back next month for us to do the final. Site plan review.
Hmm.
Uh, as part of that, and seeker. Well, no.
No, seeker, John.
It's seeker, good seeker, yeah, so we just have to do the final site plan approval. Good.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Listen back.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And good luck.
You.
Am I still sharing this, let me figure it? Sure. Okay. Uh, twenty-one fifty Dryden Road.
So we're not completed the application, so. Oh. Oh, wait, no, you're next, the. The first one, twenty-one fifty driving.
There's two twenty-one fifty Dryden Road things.
So the one that was repaired garage was.
Not only repaired, it was.
Nope.
Yeah. No, no.
The next one, he's number eight.
So we don't have the, we don't have the automotive repair garage. Is anybody here?
Not completed the application, so, I mean, there's still.
I I have questions for that, but maybe Evan can go first and we can come back to it.
Okay.
Yeah, alright, let's do that first. So we're going to, this is item number. Eight on the agenda, twenty-one fifty Dryden Road solar screen.
Yes. Evan Carpenter, for those who don't know me, um. I do the, basically the. Maintenance of the grasses and weeds under the solar panels. At. Going on fifty Dryden Road back at the cemetery and on my property off Ferguson, between Ferguson and thirteen. Bright and solar one and two. Um. And the screening that was planned for. Both of them really doesn't work because they're quite tasty. To the. Native animals that run around.
I I I actually was up on. Ferguson Road and and I actually had to take a picture of those screening trees up there, cause I thought they were quite common. Something over Dr. Seuss book, yeah.
Yes, there you go, there you go, um. And that that was planted, um, twice, a lot of it was planted twice, um. Back in the cemetery. Also was very tasty. Um, a lot of it never even. Started growing, I don't think, we trimmed around the little plantings. And so many of those plantings confused me, cause they were, you know, they had some. Juniper evergreens in, but it was like. Evergreen, 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 stick, 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 sticks, of a different variety. You know, like, I I could have seen it if it was alternating or something like that, the idea of having the evergreens there, so that. It's got foliage all year round. Um. But then I also kinda wonder, I had a little bit of a side note, what the purpose of putting blue spruce around a cell tower is. When the cell tower is two hundred and fifty feet tall and the blue spruce isn't getting more than twenty-five feet, you know, what's, what was the purpose of the blue spruce? To hide the fence, you know, but. Side note. Um, anyway. I've done some. Work with. Um. Demetrius. McIntyre is the. Um. Liaison from the new owner of. The. One of the solar sites on my property. And back in the cemetery. Um, to try to come up with something that's a little bit better. Um. There have been three owners on back in the cemetery in its lifetime. Which makes it a little difficult to, you know, those that built it and originally drew up a plan that was approved. Nobody is, you know, even knows where they live anymore.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, there are several different varieties of. Hybrid willow. That. Will either grow really tall or really low and bushy. Um. They do like to feed the deer. However, they also, once established, do grow faster than the deer can eat them down. They're not extremely tasty to the deer, but they will eat them, they will chew on them, et cetera, but they are rapidly growing. But they don't get necessarily tall, there'll be a lower, bushier, unfortunately not an evergreen. But you get enough sticks up there, no one's gonna be seeing through it. Like what is able to be visually seen through now. Um, I believe. One of the varieties of willow has been planted in front of the. Uh, 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 uh. Next to elemental veterinary, the, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever the the.
Landscape, sorry, those, yeah, sorry.
Landscaping there, but they've also got a berm in back of that too, you know, to help hide their stuff. Um. My hope was to be able to put enough rows of. The willow. On thirteen. That will be staying low, so that first. Section of panels that is visible right across from Scotty's. Will hide that. We can't get it too high because there's not a lot of space between the solar panels. And thirteen. But it should be. Able to be made thick enough that it will clear, cover that area. The plantings that they have in there now are right close to the fence. Demetrius has not gotten back to me as to how close to thirteen their lease is. I don't wanna be putting willows on somebody else's property. Um. Now, right in back of the cemetery. There's, they've got a a row of plantings and then several hundred feet of open field and then another row of plantings down by the fence. We could be putting much bigger willows up front that would screen that quite nicely. Um, it could be alternating of of tall willows, low willows. Um, to help, you know, as the big ones get big and, you know, they're never gonna get big enough to shade the panels way back there. But having the lower ones up front, that would help the screening from those at the cemetery. Not not the residents of the cemetery, but those that come to. Um. Looking at it from Ferguson Road, we can't do much about that. Uh, looking at the cemetery, on Ferguson Road, it would also be low growing. And. Evergreen or the willows up there. Um.
On the uphill side, on the Ferguson Road.
On the Ferguson Road side. Um. You may not notice, but there are evergreens on the northern side of those solar panels. On the Route thirteen side. You barely see them because of the rise of the property.
Right.
There are some trees there, about a third of them are still alive. Um. We could put. More willows down there if you wanted to, I don't know as it's necessary, because anybody traveling thirteen doesn't see. The solar panels. And they're looking at the backside, they're not seeing any glare. But that's, you know. A a another choice for you guys, the outfit that owns that lower, um. Site is different from Altus that owns the other two.
Right.
Evan, the ones on the north side, what variety are those, you said a third of them are still alive?
Uh, they were alternate between blue spruce and white pine. A variety of white pine.
Also, those are the same age pretty tall.
Yeah.
And the critters don't care for those.
But they're on the north side.
They're, they, they, a lot of, they were really good about watering those trees. The spring that they were put in and it was raining every other day.
Okay.
And then it came off really dry in August, nobody watered them. And a lot of them died.
So the two thirds of them that died.
Yeah.
Died.
Rather, rather soon.
Gotcha.
And and a lot of the white pines are still, you know. Every year, like, oh, that one's not gonna make it, that one's yellow, and it's April, hmm, don't think it's gonna make.
And you're thinking you don't wanna put pine or spruce on the south side, cause they get very tall.
Yes, yes.
Gotcha.
So my thought was, well, I just, I've worked with, um, give. Yes, um, an Edward Forrester with extension, it's coming up with an idea on what to use. Um. He is no longer with extension, he's a private consultant now. Um, I've also. Been in contact with several greenhouses, the information that I sent you was just a shortened article about what willows. Could be as opposed to the hundred and fifty some page, um, fact sheet that I had from DOT. They use them for winter breaks. Snow, live snow fences. And visual barriers as well.
And who would plant them?
Um. White Wake Land Maintenance, that's me.
Okay, so you planted maintenance.
Uh, that, that's, yep. We'll. We'll be doing the 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 planting, the maintaining, um. Uh, White Wake Land Maintenance is my son and myself and. We're 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 training the grandson as well. You know, he drives along, Lori.
One of the. One of the stipulations that had been put on these originally was that the plantings be native. Is that an issue here?
The four corners of Route thirteen, George and our settlement is known as Willow Glen Corners.
Yeah. Good. Stream, what do you, what?
It's Willow Glen Stream coming down through there.
Go willows. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but there's lots of different kinds of willow.
Right, yes, um. And this, this being a hybrid willow, it's. One of the other things of putting. Um. Something in there that would be natural, like sumac. Multiplo rose, you know, other things that are gonna be dropping berries by way of birds, et cetera, that's gonna get out of hand, this being a hybrid. It's not gonna be. Dropping seeds and we're gonna have acres of brush.
Yeah.
Does that mean they they don't spread?
They they do not spread by, um, runners under the ground. Um. They. They can spread if a large branch were to break off and embed part of it into the mud. It would re, would respout, that's the way they wind up. Propagating them is by taking cuttings, rooting them and then replanting them.
I think one of the reasons that native. Thing was in there is because we wanted to make sure that we don't get some invasive.
No, is that a invasive species at all, because it, partly because, uh, like, um. Hybrid tomatoes, you know, it don't reproduce, you can't plant a tomato seed.
Yeah, I am.
Today and and unless you're using heritage tomatoes.
Right.
Um.
No, I I I think this sounds. You know, anything that, a- anything's better. What do you want, what do you want from us?
Yeah.
Permission. Can you?
Wow, this is unusual. Wow, this is unusual.
It's a matter of.
Modification to the S U P, right?
So to the site plan.
So I brought some application to the site plan.
Because it's a species that's not listed in, in for the plantings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which, I'm not quite sure. Why they thought that honeysuckle was and mulberry was, were, were nice plantings, you know. They, they were.
Yeah, they.
Stuff back at the cemetery, but.
They, they came up with that stuff, but I mean, but, but the stipulation was that it'd be, you know, non-invasive, you know, native. Plantings.
Yep, dead plants don't, uh, spread.
Yeah, they don't. Yeah, right. Um.
So Gina and I attended the. Class yesterday. Use of agriculture and, and solar panels. Agro-montae, as they call it now.
In Grand.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Um, very good, very good sound. And I see you use sheep.
Yes.
At least on your property.
And, and back in the cemetery as well. We, we, we feed the coyotes quite well back in the cemetery. Unfortunately. That was a wise fence building job back there.
The coyotes are getting inside that fence?
I'm also working with Gritmore on, on trying to come up with some better fencing. Um.
And now, what we saw yesterday was. Recommending. Eight foot fence. These deer can't jump eight feet, they can jump seven, they can't jump. I didn't, they didn't talk about that. We did talk about the sheep and being very lucrative as far as. Um. Not only using wool products, but also selling. Sheep products.
Hmm. Right, there's not a large meat market out there, um. Other than in the ethnic market. But that's still not, you know. Six hundred acres of solar panels proposed that's going into Lewis County is, you know, not going to. You're not gonna be able to market all the sheep that it's gonna take to eat underneath there. You know, it's, it's rather limited.
Hey.
But the, the, the only thing the sheep do well is work over the solar panels.
But this, this is, they gave us some, I have no idea how. If, if, I didn't hear anybody. Post that on. But. We. The United States imports. Eighty percent of. Meat sheep.
Yep.
From New Zealand and Australia, so there is somewhere. A big market.
Right.
Um, but I only wanted to bring up. That. One of the things they talked about was. For screening, perhaps apple trees.
That is another thing that I've been trying to. Talk to the solar companies about, and I would love to be able to talk to the town boards about to be able to marry agriculture. With the solar being apple trees that are gonna be maintained by the. Apple tree orchard owner, um. For hazelnuts. Or, you know, you could even be growing small vegetables inside the fence. Um, in some of the areas that are inside the fence, but not close enough to the solar panels, so when they're, they're working, you know, there, there's a lot of room. Inside the fence that is basically that needed to be mowed. Um. Or grazed. But there are a lot of places where, um. You know. They're talking about putting solar panels in the, um, Seneca Army Depot into areas of that. Well, that has been bought by a Manite outfit that is. Selling off house and farm lots inside there to Amish farmers. So. You would have many Amish farmers, and there's a vegetable market over there. They could be growing vegetable crops inside the solar fence. You've already got fencing up. On it. On, you know, part of it that would help keep the deer out, et cetera. To, to be able to marry those. Ag enterprises together. You, you're not gonna get a big tractor in there and tillage and that sort of stuff, but those small veg crops. Fruit trees. Small items that take a lot of intensive care. Would, would work well inside and around for screening on the outside.
I'm sure.
Um. But as I was starting to say, the sheep work real well underneath the panels because of the heat of the day. They're in the shade. They'll keep that. Underneath there chewed down quite nicely. Other than the problem we had with back at the cemetery, there was kind of abandoned land beforehand. And, um, the multiplore rose and the wild grapevines. Had a chance to get a good root establishment and then it wasn't maintained. For a couple of years after the solar panels came up. Were, were. Challenged to keep. It down, you know, it. You turn around and all of a sudden you have grapevines going across the top of the solar panels.
Yeah, that's not good.
That doesn't work for the solar company.
That's right.
Um. And, and the vines are pulling the wires off from underneath. As I started to say, the fencing over there was atrocious, still is, um. Because the ground went like this and the fence went like this. So there's a lot of places where the coyotes can go underneath it.
That's what I was wondering, they're scooting underneath, yeah.
Yep, um, we've been working at adding additional wiring in those.
Yeah.
Gullies filling it in. Um, also, when they. Built it, um, you know, they put in the posts by the gates. And then every. Twelve feet. All the way around back over here and they had three feet lacking before they got to the other post. Well, okay, they stopped and they left a three foot gap. No wire. Next, twenty feet from a padlocked gate.
Doesn't surprise me.
I have taken pictures of deer inside the solar sites.
Yeah.
Cause over.
Yeah.
They, they were so poorly done, um, where they would run out of the middle of, of water. And come to a post and over that, where they should have. Instead of just going like this and putting a couple of staples in, cause now you got a couple of swinging panels and you can walk through those areas. And. The animals do.
Yeah.
So. We had a nice setup on mine, but I was kind of involved in the design of that.
Right.
And that were there.
Well, and.
On the cheat and.
In all fairness, the, the spot you have is a little less, it's, it's a little smoother.
Yes, yes, and, and it was, it was tilted land before he had.
Right, right.
It was rated smooth.
Right, right.
So you didn't.
So you had a fairly smooth surface, whereas it, it wasn't.
You didn't have gullies going diagonally across, that you have to worry about your tractor going into the solar panels.
Well, I know, the fence.
You put, you put a post in low spot, be on the high spot.
They, they should, I know.
It doesn't matter, it's not about spacing, it's about.
No, I get it.
And, and the, the. Swinging gate, some of them are like a foot and a half high at one end and the other end's dragging in the dirt.
Yeah.
You know.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, so what do we need to do?
Uh, well, this is a site plan amendment, where I review it and, uh, true, it's these, S U P is the purveyor of the town board. But I think. This part is better of doing site plan, so I would.
So I. So, so we're gonna make a recommendation to the town board. That, um. They approve this site plan amendment. As described using willow.
A, a variety of, and I'm not, it will probably be several different types of willow.
But just. You're calling it a really.
Yes, there, there, yes, as opposed to an evergreen.
Right.
Or what it was supposed to have been. I'm probably not gonna put anything on the east side. Cause we already have existing tall evergreens. On Joe Osowski's side, and then they also did plant some. Twelve foot tall poplar just inside of that.
There's, there's a bunch of stuff on that side down there, yeah.
They wanted to make sure that. Joe could not see.
They want to make sure he was happy, yeah.
Yes.
And those are re- reasonably healthy?
Um. Maybe. When, when the dump truck dumps off the tree bundles. They lay there for a week before anybody realized that they were there and that somebody ought to go down and maybe water the bundles. Or, or do something with them. Before the, the crew that came in and planted them. So some of them didn't survive too good before they got put in the ground. Um. But I'm, most of them. We, we have had, we've been asked by Altus to. Cut out several dead ones that have been in there.
Yeah.
Because they were falling, breaking off in the.
This, this whole issue of screening planting around solar farms has been a learning thing for us and our, 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 our. Our new. Thought on that is that, uh, for these projects, we would require the. Owner to hire a local landscaper perpetually to install and then maintain. The screenings as shown on the drawings, so that somebody locally, like even would have. Responsibility for making sure that the right.
You want me to do this?
No, I'm, I'm.
Of the land?
No, no, no.
Is the owner of the site.
Yeah, the developer. So the developer would have responsibility to hire a. Local landscape company to install the screening vegetation and then maintain it. So they couldn't walk away and leave a mess.
And, and say, okay, they're planted. We, we had, we had Jim Bob's landscaping from South Carolina.
Yeah, because we've had zero success with this.
Yes.
Across the town, we've not had one that worked.
But you're right, having, having some, some stipulation that it be, you know, a local landscaper that's gonna be able to maintain beyond just putting them in and walking away and letting them die. Um, yeah, no, I, it's definitely been a learning curve. Have you? Had conversations with the board of the cemetery?
Um, no.
Do you, I, I know one of the.
I did talk to, to, uh, the new manager of. Willow Glen. When we first. Got. The contact to be mowing there to, we wanted to make sure that we were mowing where we wanted, they wanted us to mow and, and because. Exactly where the boundary line is, because a lot of the property in back of the gravestones is theirs.
And if I look at that map right there, you can see there's a, there's a line. There's like a field, there's the driveway, but then there's a field area, the, the cemetery actually is further back.
The cemetery is there.
Yep.
This is, there's, there's a row of plantings along here.
Right.
And then another along here.
So my question is, I remember when this was all going in and there was a lot of opposition from people affiliated with the cemetery. Uh, because of the impact on the view, are they gonna be okay with doing some kind of high? You know, like some kind of screening so that you're gonna completely obscure the view, I guess. Yes, you'll obscure the. That, that would be my only question, because I know they.
Obscure the view of the panels, would we also obscure the viewer of George Junior in the distance?
In the distance, right, cause, cause one of, one of, I just. You know, I was in a lot of those public meetings when they were. Talking about putting these in. And I know there were people that were like, we like going there and seeing the view from the cemetery. And I'm like. You know, so.
Fields is what they were enjoying.
I know, I know, that is what they were enjoying. But, uh, uh, I, I guess my, so my only question is, is that before you decide what to put. Along that back.
Yeah, okay.
Line of the fence, I think it probably would be good to just.
Touch base with them as well.
Touch base with them to see, you know, do they want, do they want something low? That's just gonna obscure the panels or would they rather have, you know, like what you talked about, which is a higher.
Or even some ornamentals.
Or, yeah, yeah. Or something, yeah.
They don't grow that big.
Uh. I, I know, it'd be my only. Question, it's cause I, I think, I, I would hate to go ahead and. You, you know, put something in that, that, the order of the cemetery now, it's like, what are you doing?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Okay. But, uh. The evidence has more of a, um. Um. Green burial site area for.
Yeah. Is, is, is that that back part or it's the side over here?
Side, yeah.
It's to the, it's to the west.
Way back in here.
Oh, it's way back there.
Way back, way back. Cause they, they have all of. This, yeah, the natural area is that.
Oh, I didn't realize it was that far back, okay. Okay.
Start us there.
Alright. Anyway. Uh, the only other question I have is. Knowing willows. In fact, we have one just up the road from me that. Has several branches laying on the ground again. Um. If you think about the taller willows.
Correct.
They, they can be a little. Um. What's the word I want? They, they can, they can kind of fall apart in high winds.
Trees or bushes, no.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to keep them down to be more.
I think bushes.
I know, I know, bushes are fun, I'm just. But you talk, but, but you're so good, I mean, even, you know. Pussy willow, you know, is gonna be a little bush and. They don't. You know, they're not gonna have a hundred year lifespan.
Right, right.
You know, at best, they're gonna have a thirty year lifespan, a forty year lifespan.
Right.
And yes, they will be. You know, shedding little branches and, and littering will, you know. Everybody go, we've been rolling your yard, you've got little branches in your yard all the time.
That's right, there, I guess.
So you, well, I guess pick them up.
My, my point is the higher tree, in, in places where you talked about doing the higher trees. My experience has been willows can be a bit messy.
Yes.
Right, and especially.
Messy.
Especially if you're in a high wind. Area, you know, I live up on Sims Hill, right, so it's like. We get a lot of wind up there and so there's.
All the time.
There's a willow on our road that just gets beat all the time. There's things coming off it all the time. And, and I don't mean small things, I mean like, you know.
Yeah.
Good sized. Branches.
Um.
I, I mean, do you, do you see that as an issue? If you're, you're talking about using mostly the lower ones and the, and the hybrids and the things that aren't.
Yeah, trying to keep to the ones that aren't gonna be getting so big, um. There are some varieties of, of hybrid. That will go up to like twenty five feet.
Yeah, yeah.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
Which is a little more than what I think is mainly needed.
Right.
But, you know, it could be that big if, if that's what would. Be the best for screening.
Yeah.
By the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. And, and. I will talk to Brad Perkins.
Yeah.
About. Um. His thoughts.
I, I think it's just worthwhile to just touch base with him.
I, I, good point, I had not thought about that specifically. Um.
Like I said, I just remember what. You know, all of the comments from when we were going through the public hearings when these were put in.
I'm not gonna keep everybody happy, but I.
No, no, I, I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you have to.
But fewest people angry as possible.
I'm not saying that, it's just, it would be nice if we could avoid some.
Backlash later on.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, you know, they weren't happy, they ended up going in, right? So there are people that were not happy because they ended up going in, but the, the. Point is, I think. I just remember that was a real point of contention. The view from the cemetery was a real point of contention.
Right.
Just something to be aware of. And who knows, they may just say, no, do it, do it, we like it better, we like the view better without being able to see the panels, so.
Yeah.
Well, willows being. In like moist areas.
Right. The hybrids will grow in most any soil type. But yes, they do. Prefer lots of moisture, un- until they get established. Um. We have a, a thousand gallon tank on a wagon. That I'm currently using to water my livestock because. The, the fire on thirteen. The other night, Monday night, uh, that was my fault. On Ferguson Road.
Oh.
I had four sheep out. And I was trying to get them in, I had my skid loader parked three feet off the edge of the road with the headlights pointed towards the barn door. Lady came up on Ferguson Road, straddling the white line. Hit my skid loader, took out a pole pole, sent a surge down the line, sprouts fly down on thirteen. Our swamp on thirteen, the cattails start burning.
I saw, I I actually noticed that burn mark today, I saw that, I'm like, oh, what did that happen?
Yeah. Yes.
That was your fault.
That that, well.
I heard some old lady did it.
My stupid sheep had not decided to get out when I opened the door, had to put some hay in for them.
Yeah.
All would have been fine, but for whatever reason.
And not have that happen.
Yep, you know. One one thing leads to another.
Alright, so, yeah, I think we decided uh. The placement and all that, I think, we you know, recommended the town. Recommendation is the town board that they.
Approved this amendment to the site plan.
Amendment to the site plan. Yeah. That's that's motion. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually very interesting, and actually you got me, you got me thinking about uh something I wanna do along my back property line, which abuts Sherman's. One of Sherman's cow pasture. I wanna do some kind of screening very similar to that.
I bet you could hire a wide awake to.
I know. Well, I wanna end up with something like a European hedge drill, you know, along that back property.
We'll start picking rocks so you can build a nice stone wall that the, everything's gonna be going over top of, a little bit of ivy underneath.
I will say, I enjoy having cows as neighbors.
Okay. I thank you.
Thank you.
I I can see you're from, we we refer to the shop back, you know, the farmers back there being the chop shop.
Chop shop.
Why is it with all these, you know, high priced cars that are here that are kind of half torn apart? They seem to be good guys to work with.
That's good. Alright, thanks. Uh so we're not doing anything with the the twenty one dealer going over it because the application.
Did you have some questions, Todd?
Alright, one last thing, yeah, you're gonna get rid of me eventually, um. Is there any? Do you guys wanna be reviewing exactly how many plants we're putting in or anything like that, or is it just gonna be whatever will work for? Altus.
Yeah, I think you should GPS every plant that.
No.
Evan, we trust your judgment.
Talk to my wife, please.
Yep, thank you.
What he asked.
Alright. Uh so we don't have to do the, okay, zoning uh rewrite update.
Oh, can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, you want to ask some questions, that's right, I'm sorry. So on.
When distributed sun came in. You know, they were approved five lots on a private driveway. Right? So how does this fit into that? Cause we're only allowed four by our zoning law. And that whole, that whole five came up because of the lock gate. And there there wouldn't be any real access to it. So how can we, how can we allow? An auto plant place back in that, I'm I just trying to run it through my head, why, how, what gives them the right to do this?
Yeah, so I think the driveway is a major concern with this, and so a lot of the decision making and conditions should be around that driveway, cause. You know, there's fire access issues, no matter of the driveway and how many we approved. There's no new lot being created, so I think the approval of the common driveway for the five lots is still standing.
That it's still standing, but he's leasing it, right?
He's leasing it, yeah.
And that's what he did with the Horizon Power as well. So now you're gonna have, you've got two more facilities on that private road, on the private driveway. And I don't know. When we approved it, we approved it with the lock gate.
At the road.
At the road, and it was all based on, cause the the road crossed the wetland. Remember the water was going, I, water was going over the wetland and and. Rock was like, no, we can, we don't need approval for wetlands, you know, cause they can use the maps, they were treated like agriculture or water. So they had to cross the wetland. So you get into this driveway and the wetland and you get into the. The number, you know, what, how, seems like we're opening up a can of worms if you approve this, what, then you could just come in and say, we're gonna put another building here. On that same lot, but further, and I'm not opposed to that. But it doesn't seem like the private driveway. Is the solution, it seems to me like you wanna do maybe a private road. And and also it up to let it be an industrial area there.
Yeah.
So that's that's a thought process for everybody to think about, then the private road, you gotta do. Know the fire apparatus requires turn offs every three hundred feet. You know, so I I didn't see any of that on their site plan, so I don't.
No, and what Marty is, their agent is, he's wanting the feedback from the town as to what they're gonna require on the road. Rather than propose a co-compliant road. So we're in that stage of. Back and forth trying to negotiate what, what is the town gonna require, and I think you're spot on with the. What we have to think about is, this is more use than was intended on that original private uh driveway.
That was a really, that was really a private driveway.
And it really wasn't a private, cause they didn't have to build it to the specs of a private driver, it was just an access, it was an agricultural road, right? Cause the old treatment farm was agriculture.
And now, now this is more, you're right, this is more, it's more like a private road than a private driver.
Well, that's where my head goes, so I mean, I don't.
So Craig, nothing happened to that seasonal creek that you're talking about?
It's seasonal creek.
You said it got wet to the point where there was.
Oh, that, I I haven't been back in there, meant to go back in there, but I don't know, we should, we should go back and look. Have you been back in there, right, to see what?
To see what the, what's the question.
Allowed in there when they were built.
Oh, okay, no, I haven't gone to the, to this operation. Uh so the crossing, I mean, the cover is right there at, you know, just above water level.
Right, great against, right, right.
Yeah.
So they didn't put a new one in or anything?
Nope, nope, so yeah, the construction, as you said, was done with log mats and. Yeah, so this was just intended to be handling. Uh maintenance vehicles and fire apparatus if necessary.
That's what I, that's what I always thought, and then so if you allow this to happen, so how does the? At Atlas feel about having that gate open twenty four seven? To their facilities, right, and how does Verizon feel about it? And then do they wanna close off other laneways that go, cause you got the laneway that goes to the. To the solar farm behind the cemetery, there's, you know, that's a thousand feet in there, then the one that goes over. So across from Scotty's, there's another thousand feet to get into that one. Across the back with the, with the transformers or the inverters. So I, you know, I mean, it's sort of like we're opening up this can of worms, that, I don't know.
Well, and you're putting in a, you're putting in an operation that I think increases fire risk.
Well, you, well, you, no matter what happens, they gotta deal with the apparatus.
Well, that's it, but but the fact that there's people operating a business back in there, I don't care what the business is. Versus just solar panels sitting there. You know, you've got some increased risk of. Something happen, right?
Yeah, and half mile off the main road.
And that's, that's a long, that's a long way back, yeah, so, yeah.
So the lock gate is in the, I did look it up, the, the special use permit, the lock gate is in the, one of the conditions. In that special use permit of the town. So the town board would have to have a public hearing. To get that off of the, to to redact that, right?
This would be coming before the town board.
Right, right, cause this is, but they still have to have a public hearing for, to open that and say, hey, we're gonna get, but. Before you do that, you also need to reach out, I think, to everybody that's got an interest back in there. Cause it's locked for a reason, it wasn't. I don't remember the planning board saying, put the lock box on, I think it was. Distributed sun, because they knew there were wetlands back there that were sensitive, and they also didn't want people back there messing with their equipment. So I wonder how Atlas would feel about it. If you, if you ask them. Cause they're the ones now that own it, so.
Well, Ron Zemanski owns the lot, so he's the common factor, common denominator here between Altus and this.
He owns all five of them now.
He bought the entire penny property, yeah.
Ron Zemanski bought that one, right?
Yep.
So can we, can we use the lot with the, you know? Can can we use the lot that the uh? The connection point is on George Road, and the town uses that for ball fields. Make a beautiful ball field. So so those are some of my questions and concerns, I'm like, procedurally, how do you?
Right.
Get through all these, and it's something that isn't. There's a, there's a bunch of steps in there that are, before it even comes to us, I think.
I think we're gonna need some input from the fire department, too.
Well, yeah, I mean, they should be able to figure out fire code, and if they're gonna do it, it's pretty, it's like if it's over five hundred feet, they gotta have a turn off. Three hundred feet, I think it is.
Yeah.
So Craig, it sounds like you're saying that the, pretty much the entire site plan needs to be redone. To show what would propose uses.
I don't, I.
And, you know, the, I'm not saying erase it and start over, but the changes that you're talking about are material. And that the site plan that got approved needs to show those changes and be reapproved, is that what you're saying?
Well, something has to get, so, I don't know, I'm asking, these are questions, how do you, you know?
But it would be something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have to modify the old one. Before you can get to this new one, and then is this really, I mean. Let me put it this way, the town could use an industrial park. So I'm not opposed to, if you wanted to put more in in industrial based businesses in there. But is the solar people comfortable with it? You know, is the town comfortable with it, and then how do you make, and then you have to put a better road in there for it. And you might have to put a better road in, or now just as a private route. And then it say it was fifteen feet wide?
Well, Marty's application shows fifteen feet, it it's variable, you know, there are certainly plenty of places that's sixteen, but I'm sure it's such standard through.
And it still crosses the wetland though.
Yep.
Cause that was the point of contention, too, that was one of the big. That was, I remember that going back and forth. Cause then he, then finally came that, that he could use maps to cross the wetlands, he didn't have, he didn't need a road, he could just. Use the logging maps.
Just for construction, yeah.
For construction, and then the maintenance vehicles were four wheel drive, and they could go through it like a farm vehicle. So, so that's why I questioned the road, you know, what are we doing with it?
Well, there was an originally, there was a condition there, lock gate, now it's quite open all the time, doesn't that? More change of use in there already?
Oh, yeah, this is a change of use, there was a lot of hurdles, the lock gate being one of them.
Yeah, and all this should have been done before they started coming to business.
Yeah, yeah, is that business even yet, or is that?
No, it's not, it's, you have a stop work order, but. We really don't have court support.
So I I only, I've only heard this from. Somebody that they basically they buy wrecked cars and they take them apart and create a new. They take the one that's salvageable, I don't know if that's true, but.
I don't know what the business model is, yeah.
So that'd be like a junkyard or a salvage yard, right?
If you click on the website.
Versus.
Personally, they show, looks like a chop shop. It's a trash. It looks.
Yeah, I, one of the people from the firefight, they were showing me that, I'm like.
I mean, it's right up against the panel stairs, it's right in there.
So that, so that's basically my biggest concern with the road, that you don't have fire lanes, and you don't have, you know. They didn't really show parking spots, they shoot blocks for parking spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's pretty tight between the two buildings.
Yeah.
So, you know, so they're gonna have to allow for a fire lane. Yeah, parking somehow, I I don't, I don't know.
Um, yeah, if you have it.
And then how did they get by without having stormwater?
Uh is one of the things that makes it an incomplete application.
Didn't.
That, they said that all the areas are already impervious that they're using, but that was.
But what about, I mean, so David can still, just the two buildings and the little bit of parking is. Is that probably brings it up to an acre.
It's all existent, it's all existent, you can still do stormwater, anything, anything, anything that's pretty persistent, you can still have stormwater.
Okay.
So it doesn't matter, you know, if you go over that, and the town's one acre, right, no, it's happening. And and D C's one acre. But it's.
Yeah, showing how the sweat with pencil out is one of the requirements, yeah.
And but Mike, the concern with me is that he's right next to the wet. So all that drainage is going into that wet, so now, so now you've got cars parked there.
It's an auto, it's a grease separator. The washing cars there?
I don't, I don't even know.
No, he doesn't, well, yeah, there's water there, but he doesn't have a sanitary side.
There's no, no bathrooms there.
He's got a outhouse for the party.
Well, well, you've got part of business, you've got oil, you've got gas, you've got weather, there's. Yeah, there's a lot of questions about this. Cause look at what she's got up there right now, that that, that's, that's awful tight. You know, park, he's got cars, he's got cars being parked right up against the solar fence.
Yeah.
I mean, think about, and and if they're wrecked cars, you you know, you're gonna have issues with. Who would leak it and take them before you.
Well, that'd be the concern with the wetland.
Right.
You know, and I'm gonna say it's put a stormwater, well, swim it, but you'd still. You know, you burned it and put some containment in it, or. Cause this, cause these are all, they look like they're all taris stock here.
Yeah, but there isn't, there's a whole lot of space to really go to burn this.
Well, everything slopes downward.
Yeah.
Sort of slopes down. So you'd have to contain it somehow, but.
Right.
So, so saying all that, I didn't know if it'd be worth having the subdivision and the uh. All the, all the, the site plan review and the special use permit. Recommendations of conditions of approval. Are just from distributed some from twenty seventeen, I think it was.
Oh, we're bringing that back up into the record.
Yeah, so we know what we're talking about.
Yep.
Um.
But it posted on the website.
Well, so we can see it, yeah, so I don't. And the other one is, did our, that uh RPM, did they ever go through site plan review? The tree farm? Like, cause I think they were all agricultural.
It was an ag business, I think.
So I think everything built in there was agricultural, even those barns that he's working on, so they probably never got building permits or anything, right?
Right, yeah, there is a smell on the barn and it's.
So there's no SWIP from them?
No.
Okay, so that was the other question, did, did they ever go through site plan or or special news permit to to get that started?
The solar was the first.
The solar was the first one, okay. So we don't have to worry about RPM, so we check that, check that off of there. And then there was questions on the short form that they didn't, that were wrong, when there's ground disturbance forms.
It was incomplete.
I mean, he had, he's still got a hundred fifty seven acres down for. For his lot.
No.
So.
Yeah. This has been plenty for this, and at some point we should just lock, take the application and reject.
Why don't you put a lock gate on it? Just lock the gate, say, come see me, come see David. I think you should, that'll get his attention. But I, I just thought there was work, I just had many questions, I think. I started an email and I'm like, no, I just bring it up at the meeting.
Yeah. All good.
Let everybody think about it, so everybody can think about it, right? But that would be my direction, my, my head's thinking, just turn it into a private road and let him do what he wants. That would be my recommendation, cause then you, you might give three or four businesses back. And that would be beneficial to.
Yes.
Cause it's kind of an industrial site already.
Unless I want to put the line, so we guys. What's wrong with that? Well, that's my two cents, anyway, just move on, alright, uh zoning rewrite update, uh so. We had our one meeting, uh I'm, I have ready to go out all the stuff for our meeting coming up on the third. We did, uh. We did uh get to the town board, and the town board did approve. Uh the, our recommendation to. Contract with. Was it C C P E A, is that the name of the company? To uh to move forward. Uh John. Drafted a very nice uh draft project plan, which is kind of the straw man document phase two. Which you'll all be getting as soon as I send out this email that I have ninety eight percent written. The uh, and so the plan for this next meeting, I just, and that's one of the things I wanna just make sure of, is what our plan is for this next. Zoning focus meeting is to. Really go through that. Project plan document. Uh and and see if, uh yeah, this is what's in phase one, right, and and this is, and and it's much more detailed than the scope document that we have. Uh that we. Before, uh and, um, you know. And hopefully get some input from the. Uh what are we calling the zoning advisory group? Which is the other, the people from the other boards. Uh you know, are, is this right, are we missing anything, and you know, are we on the right track? Uh we have some comments back from. Uh housing, you know, we. Um, housing, you know, we, we should have all seen those, right, the comments on the zoning audit. I thought we had one from one of the other boards, but I cannot find it now, so I don't.
Ray, do you remember getting anything from Ag or, uh, I thought we did.
Ag.
Or from conservation.
I, conservation board sent comments.
They did, I can't find them.
Alright, I'll find them, I'll find them and get them sent out.
If you, if you have them, that'd be great.
Everyone was just here with the answer.
I know.
Yeah. Uh, they reiterate each time, like with the audit, that, you know, that's some package of. Recommendations is what they wanna see in the final rewrite, so it's the same document pretty much each phase.
God, yeah. So anyway, uh, there'll be an email going out, hopefully tonight, uh, which will have all of this stuff with it. Um. Were you able to check with Cassie out of Tom Web Space?
Oh, no, to get a dedicated page.
Right, so our, our, our plan is to, to get a, a. Some dedicated space on the. Right, on the town website, rather than setting up a whole website for this project. Uh, we don't have that yet. Uh, but when we do, then that's where all this stuff will go, so we'll. We'll have it, um. So the, the agenda that I have currently for, uh, the zoning. Meeting, um. Is, uh. Essentially an update of what I just said about the town board professional services contract, uh. I have battery storage and data center crypto there, because I know, John, we wanted to get more details on. Of our thoughts on those, right?
Yeah, so I wrote up a, a straw man. Ordinance outline on both of those topics, uh, and the ideas, we wanted to have a starting place.
Right. And that, and that's, that's in that document.
Yep.
Right, yeah, so. Uh, and then, and then the review of that draft project plan with discussion on just on specific sessions, so that's, that's really what this next meeting is all about. Uh. Just, uh, so we have, uh, we. We do have an executive committee with this, uh, project, which is me. John and Ray. Um, just. To kind of handle, like, putting together these things, right? Um. And. Um. For this, uh, uh, April third meeting. I will have to join via Zoom, so John, can you kind of take the lead in the room?
Sure.
No, okay. Cause I, I'm not sure I can be the chair. Function while I'm on Zoom.
It's a tough thing when it's next.
Right, so it's, so it's, if you could. If you could do, I, I, I plan on, I plan on being at the meeting, but I, I do have to join via Zoom, cause I'll be in Albany.
You could be chair, you could do signal act.
Yeah, so about this meeting, uh, the. The, the scope of the project plan is the same scope from the straw man.
Right.
You guys saw in January. Um. When I distributed that document, it was split, so I had some text, and then I had highlighted pieces from the CPA audit that they did. Uh, and added rationale and stuff like that, so I combined all that into one document. Uh, and I highlighted the pieces that were right from CPA audit, so you can see what Nan wrote versus what I wrote for the straw man. But one thing that's important here is that, um, when you go through that. If there are things in there that you think are missing. Uh, please bring them up. And the same thing is true for the zoning advisor group people, that they need to know that that's. The purpose of meeting is that zoning. Thinks that there's some zoning issue that really belongs in phase one, that they don't see, they should feel free to bring that up.
Right.
At that meeting.
Right. So all that should go out tonight. Uh, and then we have a meeting on the third, and we have a plan for that, anything else we need to talk about as far as that zoning updates, or?
Okay, cap.
Alright.
You guys. Can I share something really quick? In case it helps. Though I tested this, I think. It'll work, and this is not even a straw man, it's more of like, uh. I don't know, a sketch of a straw man. Um. Oh, but I can't, can I share my screen real quick? Let me make your co-host. Okay. Um. I was trying to play around, so first off, I've inquired about getting everybody here. Who's involved, the town email addresses, apparently there is a delay in that, because. Everyone's gonna have to get new email addresses due to a new website change, so they're trying not to issue. Emails and then reissue them shortly after, um. But this group is first on the list to get. Email addresses. It gets a little tricky, but I tried to create a share, uh. So if we create a regular website, it's static, you can't go in and like edit documents as a, like, as a group, so I tried to put this together with. Again, like you can have quick links, you can have a document library, you can have to dos. Um. You know. Upcoming meeting information, milestones, things like that, um. Without everyone having the emails, it's hard to use some of the tools, like we can't have a team chat. Um, going in here. But this would allow for shared. Um. Shared editing, so the, the documents don't have to be passed around by email. But I'm not sure what Cassie was up to, but I popped this together as a test. And I don't know if the executive committee, if you want me to. Send you guys invites, if you wanna. Or John, after you, sorry, Tony, after you send the. Email, I could populate some of those documents in here and share it with you, and if you think this works.
Yep.
It might be helpful.
We do need a central place for all this stuff, and and how it gets set up is, is fine, but I think, you know, um. This isn't shared, right, so the. The downside of SharePoint is you gotta have all the email addresses, right, so it's.
Well, it's, it allows me to, I tested with a, with. An e, uh, my personal email that's not associated, and it allowed me to. Be as a guest with the ability to edit. Um. Without having an Office three C, it just creates like kind of a shadow account, so the guests can have access. Um. Until you all have.
The tricky part.
Accounts.
All of these documents need to be available publicly.
Mm-hmm.
And so we'd have to make sure that. Uh, uh, whatever we do, we, we may still need a like webpage kind of thing, like we do projects under review. Uh, on the web.
Oh, yeah.
For, for the publicly available. Documents and whatnot, but.
I was. I was just trying to create a place so the email, emailing multiple versions could be easier, but.
Absolutely.
Again, this took me fi- five minutes, so I'll share it, and if it's not helpful, I'll delete it.
No, I, I think it, it, it really is, because you're right, cause. I would rather not email documents around, I would re- really rather have a place I can point people to, whether it's SharePoint or whether it's the website, just have someplace. I can say, yeah. Go get it here.
You're right, yeah. We worked into this process also.
Yeah, we'll have to talk Bambi and, and see how we can do all that, but yes. But thank you, that's, I, I think that's, you know, it's a great start, I think. Uh, okay. Uh, planning department, update.
So the Five Freeze Road site had a great bit of news this afternoon, they got three point seven million, uh, towards this about a sixteen million dollar project. So that was the funding that they applied for in September, and were hoping to get. Uh, and word finally came through. They were also successful on one of their downtown Ithaca projects too, so. Their INHS has had a good, good month. Um. Also, the Village of Dryden got the forty eight million New York forward award. So there'll be a process over the next year to find those projects that they wanna put forward. As I understand the process, they put together like a steering committee or an evaluation committee of fifteen, twenty people, and then, uh, solicit projects from. All over the village, and, and then that committee. Picks their best mix towards the forty eight million, and then it ultimately has to get approved by the state. So despite what they put in the original proposal, it's back to ground zero as far as. What projects might get funded by that money. Ray, it'd be interesting to see the applications they wrote for that, the projects that they have in mind that. Cause them to get. I can forward that to the board. Yeah, I'd be very interested to read. Okay. What is your thinking about? But again, even though that's all. What got them the money, it's all back to ground zero. Right, right, right. Um, also on the report that as far as the P U D R at the end of Cardinal Drive, uh. They're gonna submit a. A formal application, but we have some major issues with getting the sewage from there through the town of Ithaca to the plant, there's lots of pipes that are already. Very full interceptor pipes, so that's, that's a major issue that I have to work through, but. Once we get a full application, we can start pushing that more. And then sadly, after a report that Shelley Nickerbacher has resigned, so.
Yeah.
Um, we lost a good public servant, and, uh, she went to a job at T C three.
Oh.
So just up there.
So now we're looking for another.
Were the announcements out on the street for, yeah, both full time CEO and part time CEO.
Yeah. Yeah.
So don't be too hard on Dave now.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause he's the only one left.
He's the only one.
For Dave.
Yeah. That it?
Yep.
Thank you, uh, town board.
I think the big news already came out, um. Throughout the meeting, um, as far as, uh, uh, we have approval to move forward with the. Um, getting a contract in place, um, with the zoning rewrite. Vendor, um. I'm not sure, bear with me, for this team, um. Yeah, how much nitty gritty you guys like to get, if you wanna hear updates on the Etna Fire Department, um, or if you wanna, you know, if you wanna hear general updates, or things that are just specific. Teams. Nothing big, um, you know, we've got the. Think you guys already know that there's been, um, everything is to the D C to get, um. Move forward with. Just waiting for information so we can get, uh, put it out to bed for the both of you. Etna and, um, the rail trail bridge, so that's a big giant step forward. Um. Ray, are there other things that Dan likes to cover for this group, do you know?
Um, no, you can, you can, there's a bunch of questions and.
Okay. Um. And that, that, there's a lot of good things happening out there, but. You guys do an amazing, amazing work, so, thank you. Any questions for, that you've been wondering about, or things you've been hearing, you've got concerns about?
Hi, there you go. I have one on me. Look, I'll have one in a minute, you'll have one in a minute. Okay. We can get through this, yeah, alright.
Ask anytime, you don't have to wait for a meeting.
Alright, good.
Actually, Tony, if I could add one more thing, uh, in my regular monthly update that I sent out a week or two, couple of weeks ago. Uh, feeling well, we have a field on our, on our building permit database for value of each project. And so in the three hundred and thirty nine permits that were issued last year, just building permits, it represented a investment in the town of twenty seven million dollars. When you add up all the, the project costs, and I must say, these project cost estimates on the application form are usually underestimates too.
Right.
So it gives some metric, and I thought that was a, a good metric to have, and I'm gonna report on it every year since we have it in our database now.
Cool. Alright. Uh, anything else? Uh.
This might be more. Town board related than us, but I've been. Talking to people that are part of the Pride and their way. And there's kind of a lack of field that are maintained in the town that they've used, because the high school wouldn't let them use it. There's one over by the, the water creek plant. And another that's behind the elementary school, they've basically been abandoned, but they were kind of fixed up. And it seems like it's a resource that could be. You know, without too much effort, provide a nice place for our kids to play and. And all, but, um. I know there's a lot of interest from different families in town.
Yeah, ball fields have been talked about for a long time.
But they're, they're there, right, they just basically need to be.
Nice times. Yeah, just maintained, right?
And, uh, I know they rebuilt themselves some bug guns last year, but you know. Would make a place where the town could actually. For a few resources behind, we need to be good.
Right.
Could you send me an email with those locations, and I'll pass it on for the D R Y C, because this is an active topic, um. And they're also looking at talking about, um. Um, improvements to the playgrounds, um, at Dryden Lake as well, but the ball fields is a big. Ongoing, very active. Uh, topic.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, I'll send you.
Uh. Last thing I have on the agenda is minutes approval for February twenty seventh. Uh, nobody sent me. Any updates, but I do have a couple quick ones.
Tony, did I not send you?
No, I, I couldn't find one anyway.
Find a lot.
Oh, you did, oh. Well, then let's skip minutes approval, I'll. We'll do it next month.
Oh, I do have one final.
You have one final thing?
One final question to the board, design connect, everybody saw the. Email that came through from Cornell, design connect, anybody, I mean, I. Last fall, was it last winter, I submitted.
Hmm.
I thought, to the town board about doing connector trails to the rail trail, as a topic. I talked to Ray about it, well, Tuesday, Wednesday. And he told me to talk to Alice Green, or one of the real, and Alice said no, they weren't really, they're very, the rail trail committees kind of, their hands are full. And they also thought that. The town board put that in our lap. The connector trails was in the planning board's lap, so. The deadline's due on Monday, if some, if we, if we wanna try to submit an application for them to work on something. I didn't know. I was worried about, about it. We worked, worked doing it, I don't, does the town board have any, any other applicants for? For design connect to work on everything? Do, do you know of any, Ray?
I don't know of any other groups that are looking to put a proposal in.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty simple application, so I don't know. If they wanna go, if they wanna go through with it, so. I thought I brought it by y'all, so.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this at one of the other meetings, and one of the documents was. Activity from the area into the rail trail.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Kind of isolated and small.
Yeah, just have them do a study, and you know, the biggest thing is crossing the creek, you know, so you'd be connected where the bridges are, and then. And I submitted it, I gave it to Dan Lamb last, last, I guess it was last, I don't have it all. And they went, they wanted to go in a different direction to do, what was it, the repairs over some of the washouts. The one that had been worked on now. For the rail.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's a nice.
He didn't wanna do both of them, they just wanted to submit one, he said we could do this at a later date. So I'm only, I'm, I'm always saying, is this something we wanna do, so. And it's due Monday. So. Gives the town board support it.
Yeah, that's. Tough, I mean, I think everyone would wanna jump, would wanna jump and say, yeah, that sounds great, at the same time, it's like. The rail trail task force. Would really need to be heavily engaged, so.
They, Alice didn't wanna have anything to do with it, she said they're too busy, and then.
They're, they have a lot on their plate, yeah, there's a lot going on.
Was it a year and a half ago, we had the conversation? Feeder trails and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it was, the town board said it was pretty much the planning board's responsibility to do feeder trails. Their charge was, the rail trail charge was to just. Put a trail on top of the existing railroad. On the old railroad, that's not to do any connections to it, so, that's why I bring it up to this point.
And you sent an email about in the last day or so?
Pardon me?
You said you sent an email on last day or so?
To, to Alice Green? I.
No, no, to this group.
I didn't send anything to this.
No. There was, there was an email. Asking about.
Yeah, it came out, I think, on Monday, was it, right?
Yeah.
Monday, Monday or Tuesday, it came out.
Yeah, asking about.
I enjoy sense it out if you're searching, uh, looking for.
Problems. Something like you, so. Something like that, so.
Right, there was an email sent out by Joy asking if anybody had ideas for design.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was fit into the zone package perfectly, you know, cause. One thing we're lacking is some ideas on where these feeder trails would go as development and comes across.
I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind having them work on it.
And a good, a good example would be the dispensary down by the rail trail bridge, you know, they, you know. You had to talk them into putting a connection from their backyard onto the trail. So if you had, you know, as development moves through, we've sort of had some ideas where the, where the crossings would be. You could sort of try to help the developers move more over than that.
So is that something this committee could own and make happen?
Could this committee, could this board make it happen?
As far as working with the, uh, design connect and submitting the request and all of that. I think that's the challenge, I think it's capacity right now.
Oh, I think you, I worked with design connect on the North Street project with John and it was pretty simple, I mean, they were good people to work with, so. It didn't take a whole lot of time, they were pretty self-motivated, once they got.
Right.
Once they got their bearings, I think we met with them. Once a month for three months, maybe. But once they got their bearings, you just left them alone and they went, they did their thing, so.
Hmm.
It wasn't, wasn't too hard, at least I don't think it was.
No. It was a proposal from last fall that you sent to the end of forward.
Mine were just ideas, it's, it wasn't a written, they have, they have an online form for it now, but they all wanted to get it hard. But it would have to be somebody, I don't know whose signature it was on.
There's also a cost.
Right, a six hundred dollar stipend, so ultimately the town board would have to approve the stipend to. Pay the group.
With the stipend, the stipends only after you get, if you get awarded, though.
Okay.
Yeah. But with the, with the North Street project, I think. One benefit, it was challenged enough for the. It agreed to do, but it was also close.
Hmm.
So they, they worked it in, so if I, they, you know, dried out the shot, it certainly would be. The components would be interesting for, for teaching lessons.
So the problem is, if the town board needs to prove money for this, that nobody else is gonna have before.
Oh, you have a town board member here that might go out on a limb.
She can't approve it, though.
I can't, I can't formally approve it without a vote. Um. I would think if you, if you wanted to send an email saying I think we should do this. We could certainly try to. Make calls tomorrow and see if everyone agrees that an application should be submitted. Um, if you're willing to own it, is that overstepping, Ray?
No, I think that's, cause ultimately you will have an approved, a formal approval step, so it will be at a public meeting to. Uh, allocate.
Yeah.
And that's only after you get selected.
I mean, the application is pretty simple, there's not much to it.
No, we just have.
No, but if, if, if you could, if you could send me an email saying. I, I think this is what we should do and that you're willing to put the submission in. Uh, um, I'll reach out to everybody and. I'm sure it won't be that hard to get people to agree.
Oh, I'm pretty, for six hundred bucks, you get a lot of planning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You get, you get a lot of.
So who's gonna do the, who's gonna submit the application?
Somebody's had it done.
I know, I can. Not, not between now and Monday.
No volunteers. Parents want to help. Stuck her in the middle. I'll, I'll, I'll start it. And Ray, did you sign it?
Yeah.
So you all contact would be for you, through you.
That would probably be one thing that they would require, yeah.
It, it's, I looked it up, it asked for contact, yeah.
So.
And of course it recognizes my email address when coming to it. Yes, don't ask me why, they're spying on me. For now. Might have to do it, you have to, so you might have to somehow forward that to you, but yeah.
Sunday or Sunday.
The thirty first.
Sunday, okay, so we can do that, yeah.
So, okay. We got a day.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I got, I got major things going on this whole week. Yeah, no, I just, I just, no way I can do it.
Yeah, I think they're looking for learning and outreach and, and, you know, so be that loss where it's.
Right, if you want to send me what you've got, uh, let's start how we did in Worcester.
Yeah.
You put your ideas down, pick it over me and.
Yeah, we bossed her.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll, we'll do that.
This is working the most, so.
All right.
Put that pressure.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good. Uh, I think that's it.
And the town board's recommendation.
For what?
To do the design connect. Project, the feeder trail, the connector trail.
Oh, that we do a project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, just send, send a message saying, you know, it's what we're gonna do and then. I'll get, I'll reach out to everybody to get them all to.
Me more.
Agree that it's a brilliant idea.
More to the agreement. I, I, I'll, I'll, yeah, so I can sum that.
Yeah. But three things we need to do.
And, uh. Yeah.
If you could do that, then we, they're gonna head south and then. Then Monday.
Yep, tight schedule, that's a very tight schedule, yeah.
That's what it is.
Uh, okay.
That's all I got.
All right. Uh, that it? Anything else?
Hi, everybody.
Say we are adjourned, next meeting is April third, six P M in the conference room is the special zoning focus meeting. And our next regular meeting is April twenty fourth, six P M here. And we are adjourned, thank you.
Yeah, language.